Okay, open a meeting at 6:30.
One.
One. I guess you'll note that this meeting is being recorded.
Live. For people.
It's still being recorded as well.
Yeah.
For broadcast on Brooklyn Community Cable and YouTube. So, I guess first thing is.
Minutes of.
Twenty-seven.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the minutes, but I'll get the discussion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
The only thing is, Gasperoni's on 18 Campbell Court, have we done and signed everything on that for the.
No.
No.
No. And I believe you maybe have a draft ready or.
Yes, in the board's packet. It's a draft out, draft decision for the special permit in the state law and also for the site plan for the common driveway. It's a draft, it can be completed by the end of the week. There's a signature sheet that we had the board's company signing off on after you take a look at it. It should be filed with Tom Clark by the end of the week. If not, Monday at the board's address.
The one thing that I would, I haven't seen it, or what it, can we have in the thing, no access beyond lot three?
With, if you're the chair, we do have that as a separate item for discussion for conditions into a format of it, but I'll make a note of that right now.
Okay.
This is for the common drive?
For the common drive.
Okay.
I don't want in 50 years, you know, somebody say, "Well, that was okay," you know, that we can put.
No access to.
The property behind lot three. If it's a common drive, that should end, period.
Okay.
All right.
Well, we can get that into the discussion as part of our agenda anyway.
All right.
Okay, any other discussion on the minutes?
Nope.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, okay. Okay. And I do have some.
You have, the only copy is from Tom Holden, they're right in the beginning of your packet.
We have a. Notice from the zoning board of appeals in Holden. Correct dimensional deficiencies on 139 Twinbrook Drive and 145 Twinbrook Drive, anybody interested?
What street, what's that on?
Twinbrook.
Twinbrook.
Another one from Holden Board of Appeals, special permit to build a single family home on property at 89 Avery Road. Why a special permit to build a house, interesting. And another one from Holden, petition Susan Harrigan and Timothy Shaw for variance to build an accessory structure on commercial property located at 1650 Main Street. I have no idea what 1650 Main Street is.
Can't be right down there by House Farm, isn't it? If it's in Button Rutland.
No, it's not Holden.
It's not Rutland. Oh.
It's all Holden, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's in Holden, right?
Yeah.
Any interest in any of those?
None. Curious where that is.
Yeah, I was gonna say it'd be interesting.
1650?
Yeah. Because they have APR laying right next to House. It's across the street that I just want to be cap love.
Jefferson, that would be Holden, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think of some of the house numbers.
Yeah.
Up in that area. I don't know.
No, it's furthest down across from the mill.
Okay.
Yeah, right across the street, by Harvest Grill, with the.
The pizza shop and the barber shop across from the half, or the.
No, the jewellers.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, that little complex, yeah. Just right after the mill, right past 122 Fitness.
On the fitness side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Right after the, that little port antique shop?
Yeah.
It's not antique shopping.
Okay, we have no ANRs. Next thing on our agenda is a seven o'clock public hearing, and we're not up to seven o'clock yet. So, maybe let's just go back and take a look at the 18 Campbell Court again. And decide if we want to just go ahead and sign the signature page. If we can agree on any additions to the conditions.
And you say that, that was in this handout here, the.
Yes, in your packet, there's a draft of both of the decisions.
So, being late.
Being late than ever.
Wait a minute. On the second page, the decision number two.
Of the estate law or the common driveway?
This is special plan estate law.
Yeah.
It says, "Construction of the 34-unit housing project on Campbell Court."
Like I said, this is a draft decision, and it's, this one's probably about 75%. Basically, this was brought to the board's attention to show the main findings of fact, as well as the decision piece, and what type of conditions are here. So, that's obviously a carryover from a prior decision of a special permit.
Campbell Court, there's three houses going to be there.
Yes.
Not 34 units.
This, I think, this is like my Spruce Hill senior condominiums. I don't think this is.
No, no, this is the right decision, but this is a draft, it's about 75%. I used a prior work product to inform the basic outline.
Yeah.
So, thanks for catching that.
Okay.
The purpose was to at least show the substantial part of the decision with the findings of fact, as well as the reference to the plans that are subject as conditions.
So, that number two on the decision is out?
Correct. And not number one for that matter.
Yeah.
And what you will see is a similar decision reflecting the plans that were submitted for the approval. Those plans would be set in the same way as these are. To limit specifically to one estate lot, that kind of detail. So, I apologize for what you see there.
No worries. This is just a draft.
Correct. Yes, it's about a 75% draft.
Okay.
From five on, that is new, and that's specific to this decision, the findings of fact from five on.
Can you rub your head?
Your ass.
Freaking TV.
Yeah, I'm gonna be a little calmer than what you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm ready, I was gonna spiral a little bit, but now I gotta watch my temper. I gotta watch what I say.
You and me both.
All right, moving on.
Okay, what is your pleasure on these documents? Are you willing to sign the signature page? Let they connect with the final draft? Or do you want to wait until the next meeting when he has the final document to sign it?
When did we tell Mr. Gasperoni to come for it?
We told him a month, I thought. I know it wasn't the next meeting.
I don't particularly. I, I don't think it was promised for this meeting.
It was not promised for this meeting, but maybe the next.
You know.
If it, I mean, if it's so, I don't mind signing it, but not reading the draft, I trust Dave for freedom.
If I could, I would circulate the draft, I would accept the signature sheet, would circulate the draft for final comments from the board members collectively, and incorporate any changes that you see fit before attending this.
Yeah.
So, that's.
That I can do.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It's got it, it's NAHR.
God, you keep doing that.
It's okay.
Sorry.
I don't, I've got people I've known for 30 years that spell it that way all the time, so don't worry about it. I just want to get it right, so somebody can't come back and say, "Oh, that's a wrong name, and this is an illegal document."
Okay, do I have a motion to sign the two documents with the provision that.
Review before being distributed?
They will make necessary amendments and changes, and will make it available for review by us by email?
I'll motion that.
Second.
Moved asset.
That's purpose.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
All right, all right.
I have the decision page, so don't sign yours.
Okay. Five, five different.
I don't have a pen, I got a pencil. Perfect, thanks. You get to sign it before I will.
I'll sign it for you, you're good.
Just X.
Just X.
X.
Sure can. I assume it's gonna be a DNA stamp, but you know.
Oh, stop with that. 1984 is already passed.
Kaiser cannon glitching.
Wow, we're honorable.
Oh. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marilyn, I thought you.
This gets recorded? Does this get recorded?
The special permit or the site plan?
Special permit.
Special permit gets recorded at the registry of deeds, the site plan only at the town clerk's office.
But this one does. Therefore, I'm not, my name isn't supposed to be Charles Richard Williams, it's supposed to be Charles R. Williams, just to let you know, that's how he signed it.
Okay, I'll update the signature sheet.
Well, it is, that's the way it is updated.
Oh.
Years ago, it was that way, but changed it.
Can I borrow that? Thanks.
Try that one.
Finish circulating. And we still have about 10 minutes until seven, so. Think we'll skip down to other. Holden number one is update community hall annex renovations and related. I asked Dave to send out an email to everybody. We had discussed meeting with administrator as a full board, and after thinking it over, I said, "Well, maybe it might be reasonable to offer an alternative in that the full board might all seem like, you know, we were something of a mob coming after us." Okay. And possibly an alternative would just be that we have to have representatives from the planning board to meet with them. Among other things, we would not have to post it, we only say had two members, we might not have to post it as a meeting. I heard back from, I believe, three of you, and at least two of you seemed to say, "No, I want to meet face to face as a board," and that's good enough for me. So, I'll just open it for a couple of minutes for discussion, and then some other thoughts.
Basically, what was written, Marilyn, Tim, and yes, I agree we need to sit down with him. He has gone way over his pay grade in doing what he has done to us. I'm sorry, but in my opinion, for crying out loud, we're elected board, and, and right now, we can't, that particular piece of paper, it would have been nice up on the screen for the rest of us to, to look at, you know, that's why we had that screen put up there, so we all know what's going on at the same time. And to me, for crying out loud, to stir the pot that has been stirred like this, for what reason? So, he can have a nice room, or to get us agitated? I think agitation is the word, I'm the one that's agitated. And for what? To have more people come in for dispatch, for crying out loud, when this town should have only one dispatch, in my opinion, the heck with this, you know, trying to be a regional, that's why you're the Commonwealth of Mass, and not county government.
I don't think we can do anything about that.
We can't do anything about it, but we should have had our room, we should have been able to do something with that building, period. Kick him out, put him upstairs in the fire department, put him upstairs in the community hall. I'm sorry, but I mean, oh, he better come face to face to us, for crying out loud, because I am not happy about this, period. And both Marilyn and Tim got other facts in the air, and boy, you know, there, there's gonna be hard times coming. When the winter shows up, you, you wait.
Oh, yeah, I, even when they start renovating that building, you know, that's, that's an old building.
Here's the thing, is they don't have any money to renovate it right now.
Yeah.
Then what are we gonna do? We're gonna be shifting around like this?
There's my frustration, I feel like I'm a ship without a port right now.
Yeah, and we are elected officials, that's true, so.
And it, I can deal with the moving around, the problem is, I have no access to our files, we have no computer base, because we're from room to room, that's my frustration, I guess I could carry everything with me, but I'm used to, I'm used to like leaning over and opening the drawer and pulling out, you know, oh, for the by, the town bylaws, can't do any of that stuff anymore, that's why, you know, and maybe I do need to pack up, but I don't feel that I should be a traveling planning board member.
Well, we want to look at a plan, a set of plans.
I can't look at that.
We can't get it up on the screen, or we can't pull them out of the rack.
Yeah, that's my frustration. I can look at overall, the big picture, and see what happens, my frustration is, for the next two to three years, we're the traveling planning board, with no port and no access to our files or documents. And I gotta say, the ConCon's gotta feel the same way, and so does the RDIC, because they're in the same boat we are, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
So, that, that's my frustration right now, and then I listed a bunch of other ones, but those were all sort of backups.
Yeah, you had a good list, yours was very well written. Yours was very well written as well.
Thank you.
Brief, well written.
Yeah, I'm not brief, I know that for.
No, and that's, that's fine indeed. And I'll have to say, you know, I'm frustrated, probably as much as anything with the lack of something concrete for us to grab onto. About what's happening and when.
Even the professional critics, when they first decided to do it, they didn't give us any, it was like, "Here you go, this is what's happening, deal with it."
And my wife did say that even though he may want to take the screen from us and use it in the conference room, doesn't have any right, because it's not town property, the ConCon and the planning board paid for it out of their revolving funds, it's theirs. Now, if I guess if we want to donate it to him, we can do that, but it is, half of it is ours, and the other half is the ConCons, and it was taken out of revolving fund, not town money. I mean legitimately is town money, but it wasn't taken out of a town budget. So, I did ask that question, to make sure I knew what I was talking about before I brought it forward to the board.
Just very quickly, I probably shouldn't have even said this, but they have made some progress on the lower level of the community hall.
Oh, haven't been over there.
Yes, they have put up four sound baffles. About, oh, I don't know, half the size of a refrigerator on the walls.
Is it okay if I shut the side?
No, no.
No, you're gonna leave it off.
Is that door, is their door open?
Yes.
Close the.
Can I shut the door?
Shut the door. Put a chair up.
And, and they have put in a dehumidifier.
Dehumidifier?
Dehumifiers they put in there?
Dehumifier, yes.
Is that before, or after, is that before the mold was?
Well, again, there's been, it's like I said earlier, there's no money to do any renovation, only money they have is for the study and for the plans, there, there's been no money, and so I don't know if at the town fall meeting, is that where I'm gonna try to slip it through, because there's only 35 people at the meeting?
Not gonna be much money for new growth this year, so. You're not gonna get it there.
So, I just, that's my frustration, is that I don't, it's the three-year plan, and like I said, my big question was that $100,000, when's that expire? It can't be this year, because we're not gonna have anything ready, so they're not gonna be ready to move in.
You know, I, I don't know the story of that grant.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
It appears it's an ongoing grant.
Okay.
Not just a, not just a single grant.
I mean, I don't know if I remember putting in there, maybe I forgot to, but, you know, there's, there's fire staff that needs to come in eventually, because, I mean, they're lacking personnel, so the concept of what Dick had said earlier about having that second floor, and I know there's air handling in, units in it now, but you could easily put a second unit across the fire station, and then tie into what's there now, and figure out to do something a whole lot easier than tearing into a 90 or 80-year-old building, and hoping that you put in an elevator, because see, over at the fire station, it already has an elevator, so you don't have to put one in. It's already there.
Is there one?
Yeah, that's the one that Tommy had to get updates.
I don't think, I don't think it goes up to the third floor, though.
They just go from the dis, second floor, dispatch to the police.
Well, it's there, so it can be expanded, it's a lot easier than putting a new one in, and it's.
Chairlift.
Yeah, oh.
Yeah, that's what I think.
It doesn't go up to that second floor.
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
Okay.
And it's not even an enclosed elevator, so I understand.
Oh, okay, well.
Now that you mention that, I recall seeing that.
All right, so that just goes from the, the fire station floor down to the.
The larger section, stuff.
I told them before, it'd be better off for them to think about putting another fire station in someplace else in Rutland, and taking that empty spot on the bay for a dispatch. It's gonna happen sooner or later, so why not make it sooner?
Yeah, anyhow, those were just, those were just thoughts that, to Dave's point a couple weeks ago, I mean, this would all came up in hearings if we'd had them, about discussions and ideas, and some other issues that could have been put out there, so, which, which never happened, and again, that was part of my notes, it's like, we didn't have a chance to have any hearings, even with the public, for their input. It's, because legitimately, that's their money, that's eventually gonna be spent, or is being spent. Now, they've given the approval for the study, and for the, you know, bringing the walls up to the ceiling, that was all approved through the FICOM and open meeting, but that's as far as it went, didn't go any other farther than I know of. So, anyhow, that's it for me.
Okay.
6:59, we're at the moment.
Okay.
Very close.
Well, let's just, I think we can wrap this thing up pretty quick. I have spoken with Dave, and he is willing to draft a letter to the town administrator requesting a meeting. What I think you do need to be aware of is that his availability on evenings is probably pretty limited. I would expect that he probably would not be able to come to a regular planning board meeting. So, that's gonna require at least some flexibility on our part as to when that meeting would happen.
I think, Norman, if I remember his agreement, he said Tuesdays and Thursdays he has class, if I'm not mistaken. And that was in agreement with the select board, so I'm not gonna bust him up about that, that was known coming into the, so I'm willing to have a Wednesday special meeting, if that's what it takes to meet with him, Wednesday night, 6:30, or whatever, if, if he's available for that.
I'm good.
Works, okay. So, we agreed, I don't, I don't think we really need to take a vote on it, to let. to let Dave, uh, write a letter. I'll certainly review it before it is sent off. Requesting a meeting.
So moved. First meeting, I'm gonna make a vote on it.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Nope.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onward, uh, we're after seven o'clock.
Yep.
We have a continuance of a public hearing on Maple Hill Estates, six lot open space design option. Applicants are here.
I brought the big ones. Anybody wants to look?
Dave, you have a copy of the letter from KP Law in here?
Everything is, yes, it's in your packet.
I made a, Julian from New England Environmental Design. I made a bunch of copies. So the last meeting we had, there was quite a few questions on not only the nuts and bolts of the subdivision, but where we're all coming from to get there. Go over from the beginning to where we're at, trying to get to the end. And the subdivision part is pretty much the middle section. So, if I can just start. Oh, yeah.
Is it needed to sit up at that table? Do you mind if I like?
There you can sit up at this table.
Can't see, I can't hear. I'm getting old.
For a lot of people.
You do know when you come up with your own debate.
Let's start with the land itself, I guess. Because there was a couple of questions on, on where we've came from and where we're going as far as subdividing a piece of land that... This, this is one parcel. This was Dave Suzerko's. This is Dave Suzerko's parcel. That was endorsed in two thousand and fifteen. As an estate lot with a, a regular conforming lot and another conforming lot.
Julie, what sheet do you want, like, we just gave them?
We're on, we're on sheet one of one dated two twenty-six fifteen.
Right, that's this one.
That's the one.
That's what you're showing right now?
That's what I'm showing right now. So I'm just trying to get everybody on the same page of where this has all come from so that it's not confusing on lot count. So that, that was created. And then we also have the original subdivision, which I probably don't have that sheet. Probably don't, I didn't bring it. Of Maple Spring. Actually, I actually don't. But the shape of the land is on sheet dated six, seven, eighteen, which is, yeah, which would be that next one, you know?
It's the first sheet.
That's the first sheet.
First sheet, all right.
So, that plan was endorsed six, seven, eighteen. And that shows the Suzerko's property and Cleese property. And that, that was primarily done to do a land swap of parcel D and parcel C so that this open space design can be utilized in the front portion of the property. So, that plan from the last meeting, it was stated that, well, that should have never been endorsed because it doesn't say a state lot, because it is in the state lot, and it, and that's correct. So I'm asking, to rectify that whole situation, can we reapply for a special permit for this piece of property? So that, that's not a question anymore. Because it meets, it will meet the criteria. Now I have the next plan. I don't wanna jump to the end game on this, but I might as well, seeing we're talking about that parcel. In the end, if we flip over to nine, nine, nineteen. Yep, that's the one. It's got, um, keep going, this one. Nope? Yep, yep. In the end, this parcel will be the subdivision. And this parcel with a special permit for lot number two will be a five-point-five-four acre owned by Suzerko. And lot three is this piece that's already a lot. But the whole reason why Dave is wanting to get into this is he wants to extend...
Excuse me, through the chair. Can you put it up on the screen so we can see it better?
I'll try. Here we go. Probably it.
There you go.
He's somewhat serious.
I'm somewhat serious.
Because I'm having a tough time.
You can do that.
Yeah, that, that's perfect. I mean, that's what we're gonna have to do.
All right. So then, go back.
So we're going back in time, back to old school.
Yeah. Not the idea, but it is.
All right, so this, this will be what we're trying to achieve as the two lots that Suzerko's had will still only be two lots. So no new lots were created. It's still his house that he's built and the one A and R lot that he had here, but he wants to extend that to be longer because he'd really like to put the house further back and not go by it. That's, that was the whole intent of why all this is happening. And with Cleese subdivision, they were able to come through an agreement that, all right, as long as I get my six lots, they don't need to be back here, they can be up here. So that's, we'll put that to the side now, as, as that's what we're looking to achieve. To get to there. What we've done with all the questions and the comments from, from Quinn Engineering, they were the question on lot count. And now because zoning has changed, since this was an approved subdivision, we have a TC-two zone. And the question was asked on, can you do an open space in the TC-two zone? And we don't have an answer. Doesn't say you can, doesn't say you can't. So, we decided, this is the TC-two zone. We can pull that right out of this project and meet, these two lots meet the criteria of TC-two with this. This is the actual approved Teresa Drive from the original subdivision. So, frontage and area, I need twenty thousand square feet and a hundred and twenty feet of, of frontage. And I have that. So this now, uh, two lots on an approved way, it's not, it's not existing, we didn't build it, but it's an approved subdivision way. Those two lots are created. So we then took in today's zoning of two hundred feet of frontage and an acre and a half of property. So here's one lot, two lot, three lots, and the fourth lot on this existing approved way. Able, with this configuration, we're able to extract this tail end of what Cleese owns now, so it won't be restricted. Because the, the question came up before is, if you show all this as the boundary, then this all has to be part of the final subdivision. And that would mean this is restricted and Mr. Suzerko wants to be able to build this house that was proposed here, right, pretty much on this line here. So that when you come into his house, he's not driving right by it. That was the whole...
Isn't that where the wetlands are?
No, there's, there's a, no, there's no wetlands here, but there is a two-hundred and four-hundred foot DCR zone in here. So he's, he's, he's outside of it right here. So it, it works as far as the environmental stuff. So we, this, this was sent to Quinn a few days ago for a lot count to get the six lots that we're looking to get out of this open space. Extracting the TC-two zone and now creating this four-lot subdivision with a roadway for the lot count. Then we go to the...
Julian, hold on.
Yep.
I'm confused.
So what that is, what that's showing, he, I don't think he said this upfront, is he's trying to prove out a lot count for six lots. The lots that he shows past the TC-two district, from the pink line back, those four lots meet current zoning of today. With frontage and area, if I was to just leave the road as it was, I could build it just like, just like that.
You could build this thousand-foot road or eight-hundred-foot road and create these lots. And we're done. But, that's a lot of road. If it can be done.
That's your lot count plan?
That's the lot count plan, because we were told at the last meeting, as of today's zoning, because zoning has changed and this old subdivision is under old zoning, even though it's a grandfathered subdivision, to use it as a tool for today to do a open space, we need to show today's common zoning that we have a lot count. And this meets the lot count.
And Julian, you're excluding from that lot count the orange zone, correct?
Yes. These are two, two lots right now that we could come in with a Form A. And that's the board to endorse, this lot and this lot. Because this is an approved way on a, on a plan. So, that's excluded, yes. But they are two, two lots, so one, two, three, four, five, six. So that gives us the lot count. And it also removes this piece of real estate outside of the subdivision so that it doesn't become part of it and have to be included as open space because, here it is now.
Sorry. Couldn't find the meeting. I know the feeling.
So, with what you have up there?
This one's here?
No, just the, the picture right now.
This is a lot count of today's zoning, under today's rules, a subdivision road with six house lots.
I'm okay with that.
Use of property.
What, in concurrence with that, what is the approved estate lot portion of this total plan? I guess that's where I'm struggling, I'm trying to put, I'm trying to tie everything together.
The estate lot of this, well, I didn't color code it, was the whole piece because he was not paying on...
Okay, that's where...
Doing anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But this was a way oversized estate lot, because there was nowhere else to do anything else.
Okay.
But...
But that's a recorded estate, estate lot, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So what, like I said, going back to the, to the final, this would be what would be in the end, this estate lot would be five-point, five-and-a-half acre estate lot, not including this dog leg, two-hundred foot at the building line. It meets all special permit requirements for the use of that estate.
Let me through the chair, ask a question. Can we rescind an estate lot? That's what I'm struggling with right now, because it's not in the bylaw. I looked, I went looking for this and I'm like, damn, we didn't give a way to do that.
Before we started this whole project or got involved in this, I even approached Cleese with it, even talked to him about it, we came to this board a year ago and actually told you what we wanted to do by breaking that land off.
That was this one?
By flipping, we wanted to flip the two lots. You know, three acres for three acres. We came here and asked you about doing that. We told you exactly what our plan was trying to do to minimize a thousand-foot road.
This would end up, I mean, let me just throw this on.
Wait a minute, Julian, hold on one second. To answer Tim's question, you can't rescind it, but he can withdraw it.
That was, that was, that was the question I had that I didn't, I don't know about. Because I looked through our bylaw and I couldn't find any way to rescind the estate lot, so... Because I, I think this all goes away if that estate lot is just null and voided and we start from scratch.
And a new one is made.
Exactly.
That's what we'd like, that's why I'm trying tonight, to try to do that.
But I, I don't know how to do that, that's my problem. And I read our, what we got from our...
Could we amend the special permit?
I don't think that...
There is no language.
I looked in the bylaw and I couldn't...
She doesn't, she doesn't say in the letter, um, that we can't do this. If we do deny it, we just have to give it in detail why we are denying it. I don't see any reason, we're still getting another estate lot. It's gonna be un, not divided, you know?
I thought, when I read her letter, and someone can tell me if I'm wrong, that she was saying that if we wanna go with these changes, we need to send this to the ZBA to have them take a look at it. Am I incorrect in that? I'm paraphrasing too, from what I read.
You have it in there.
Yeah, I, I read it quickly this afternoon at lunchtime. And I thought that's what she was recommending was...
Is that another one of those letters that they show, that shows up the date of, of the hearing that nobody gets to look at and, and talk about?
I can't comment on that because I don't know. I just, I just read it today.
That one hit me at the ZBA.
I just read it today.
September tenth, yeah. Doesn't do me any good. I can't even say anything about it.
This is all the...
Quick reading, I don't see any ZBA reference.
So, can I just say this, though? For, looking at it for the town reason why it's a great way to go, the town's either gonna own a thousand-foot road or a four-hundred-foot road. I mean, where does the town wanna go with that?
Unfortunately, the town needs to, you know, go through the regulations.
I understand.
We may only, we can't say, oh, that's a great idea, yeah, about it.
I think the planning board has the power to authorize for us to put my house into a special permit.
If we apply for a special permit for the new shape, go through the process, public hearing, all the notifications, and make a condition that the old special permit is rescind, is not rescinded, but...
Supersedes.
Supersedes the old one. So that one's gone and this one's there. I would think that's as clean as you can get with a, with a title and everything.
She does state in her letters that this is a however legal and may be able to apply for a new special permit. The reason is that your lot, if the new lot meets all the requirements.
That's exactly what we'd like to do. And then this one's in place until that one gets approved. Soon as that gets approved, that one gets, because right now, there is a special permit in hand. Fortunately for Dave, the house is already built and he's living there. It's not like he's looking to move forward, he's already moved forward. So, it would be notify all the abutters and go through the whole process.
What's this last paragraph? Dave, maybe you can help me, because I'm, I read this. It says, "In my opinion, the proposed subdivision would violate the bylaws if the land in the TC district were used as private roadway to access residential zone land", which is basically what you're saying, correct?
Nope, nope.
Help, help me understand, Norm.
This will not be public-private road, this will be part of a public road. It just goes through TC.
Okay.
And then, and this is lot one, this is lot two, or lot one and lot six.
Specifically for lot count, but on the new plan...
Let me go to the new plan, and I think that'll answer pretty much everything. This plan shows ten, the orange is TC...
Yeah, that's, that's TC-two.
TC-two. So we've got this great piece of road in the TC-two on the subdivision control lot, lot one, lot two. And this bulb creates one, two, three, four, six total. This is all open space. This goes to Dave unrestricted, because that was a question, because he wants to modify this and be able to build right here, so he's not driving by this house. And that's where it ends up in the whole scheme things. And the road is now four hundred feet instead of a thousand.
So the question is that, that Dave wants to withdraw the special permit and what he has...
Well, submit a new special permit and, and withdraw the old one.
At the same time. So when you, if, if and when you approve the new one, the old one goes away. And the new lot, and the, and the new one dictates. And then the, the land becomes free for Dave and I to make a swap. It, it's the exact, to the, to the T, it's the same amount of acreage that he's given me than I've given him. It's just coming off the backside of that. And it's so much nicer for, I mean, Dave's house is beautiful. Um, you know, you don't wanna have me building houses in the backyard. Honestly, I mean, I, you know, I'm, that's one of the reasons why I'm, I'm going through this, I, I, you know, we, you know, we don't wanna do it.
More than that, Cleese, I think it's a better deal for the town. They're not going through wetlands like they don't want.
So here is, you're getting open space. You have to see, but here is, here's Dave's house. Here is the approved way. Here's the cul-de-sac.
For just safety.
Yeah.
For highway.
We eliminate that, all that, and get the same.
And open space land can't be divided.
And, oh, put a piece of open space.
And we kill the back corner over here, too. That kills this land over here, can't get through me now, because that kills that. If not, that leaves this open.
So, let me ask another question, that, that the new proposed colored section, it's got the blue and the yellow.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, let's get back to, because we don't have... Yeah, I'm sorry, let's get back to, because we don't have a board to go to. Said that out loud on TV, just wanted to make sure it was clear. No, um, Julian, yeah, that one, thank you.
Agreed.
I gotta, I'll do the point and all that stuff. So. I guess this is where I need the procedures where I'm not sure of.
New Form A will be made showing this blue line.
That is going to be the new.
The new estate lot.
Correct.
With all the language, as you, you can.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And this will be the new, there was, there was a lot three here, but he, like I said, he wants to push the house back here. So it was, there's two driveways that come in right now.
Yeah.
And the house is proposed like right here and he doesn't want to look at it. He wants to slide it back here and the only way to do that is to get this property. So this will be lot three revised. It's a three and a, three-and-a-half acre parcel with over two-hundred feet of frontage. And then the state lot has total of five-point-five-four acres.
And that, Julian, that lot three was part of the estate lot in the past?
No, lot three, lot three was its own, A and R lot, that's on sheet number, the very first one. This is the very first plan that was, that was.
It's not an approved lot.
Yeah, but part of lot three is.
Right, yeah.
Part of the.
This was, this was back in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, but. Yeah, yeah, I, I.
So all we're doing is extending that line down.
Yeah, it was, because that little dog leg's part of the estate lot that it goes into. Am I nice? That's part of the estate lot, yes.
Yes, it was, you're right, this, this, where the other lines, that was part of the estate lot.
I'm just, I wanted, I wanted to make sure there's questions.
Yep.
So that is part of the estate lot and that would go away and just become a lot then?
Correct, and the estate lot's in here.
But it's still a lot, all right. Then I make it a new lot.
We're not making any additional lots, we're just shaping the.
I get it, but you're taking an estate lot and we basically have to have that estate lot that's already recorded in the registry of deeds, overridden somehow with this new blue portion. And then once that's overridden, that would go, that little section that's now part of lot three would go away and you could make it a legitimate lot three and I'm okay with that.
That's what this plan would do, this Form A would supersede this plan dated seven, nine, two thousand fifteen, plan book, plan number, this plan supersedes this and that becomes the new.
But how, I, I guess through the chairs where I'm, I'm having a tough, how do, how do we get this all encompassed? Because we've got a subdivision, we've got an estate lot and we have a lot.
Piece by piece.
The first thing is the estate lot.
Okay, yeah. Get that overridden and get that out of there.
Taken care of.
Move that for the next meeting, I'll, I'll get all the paperwork that needs and the Form A that creates that and get that rolling, we're gonna have a hearing for it.
I, I guess unless I hear from Dave, I'm usually a pain in the rear end, but I like what this is doing. It's, it's not giving us a thousand-foot road, we're getting more open space.
It's almost kind of like a bracelet and change when they went from the board to the.
Yeah.
Blocks out the back land too.
The only thing I'm having trouble with is that orange section because a majority of the road is all in the orange section and then a cul-de-sac comes out, that's, that's the only thing I'm struggling with.
You want to use the approved, the already approved plan, TC two.
No, 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 we're gonna change that, that's gonna, it just shows, this is just for lot count. The new proposed subdivision is gonna realign that slightly. Doesn't curve down like this anymore, it goes straight. But we're in the TC two zone, but I don't think there's anything that says we can't create a road. We might not be able to use it as open space, but does it say you can't subdivide a TC two zone?
It's, that's the only thing where I'm, I'm struggling with, Julian, is, is the road in the TC two that doesn't. Well, it services a subdivision, not that I'm saying it's a bad thing, I just don't know how the bylaws set, that's where I'm struggling with. They don't have, I, you know, somebody here can, on the board can help me, I don't, I don't.
TC two does not prohibit a subdivision.
No, 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 but I'm saying that road's not servicing TC two, it's servicing a subdivision.
It is.
No.
It's servicing both.
Both, both two lots are serviced by this road, we don't have frontage enough on Maple Ave, we have to create a road for these two lots.
Oh, so you're creating frontage off of the roads.
And the other plan was just because the road's already approved on a, approved, definitive subdivision.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to dot the i's, cross the t's and make sure that we're covered within the bylaw.
I don't, I don't see any problem with superseding a special permit, any more than.
Superseding a subdivision with a subdivision?
Yes, you can do it. You can A and R a lot and then you can zoom in and re-A and R it. Yeah.
Our bylaw doesn't prohibit it, so. I don't. I don't. Again, don't get used to this, this is two meetings in a row, I'll give you credit for coming up with this. This is not a.
What's happening?
Yeah, I know, you're scaring the hell out of me, this is two in a row, man. Yeah, I know, this is two in a row. It's, it's not, yeah. It's not whipping around, the, the, the lots are, you know, around the cul-de-sac, so they're not, you know, the flag lots that we're used to saying, I'm okay with this, right?
As, as a land user, probably is.
Yeah.
Well, most particularly, it does provide for open space.
Yeah, and one of those, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't read those buildings. No, the buildings that are next to trees saying.
Those are existing houses.
Okay. Any thought process, just this is me more down the road, planning lot four and what's the other one, lot five? I can't read it from here.
Yeah.
The orange lots.
That's one and six.
One and six, any thought process with those of, I don't know who owns them, those yours, Cle, or those? Okay.
One of them stays, one of them's mine right now.
Any thought process of what planning to do with those?
Just put houses in.
House lots.
But if it's TC two, you can also have a business downstairs.
Okay. All right. I'm just looking at the one over on, I think it's lot one. That's a lot of hill there.
It's allowed in TC two. You gotta get on the road.
All right. I just, it was just curiosity, it's nothing, I can't tell you what to do with it, I'm just, I just looking and going, wow.
And how, how do you gain access to the open space?
The open space, there is. On, I believe we have on this lot two, there's a strip that'll get you to this. It's either on here, I did, this was not filed, it was either gonna come in here or in here.
There's something like that down there.
There'll still be a twenty-foot strip.
So get in there.
So you get the access and walk around.
So harvest it, tree it.
It's a, later in life, you can do things in there.
Yeah.
And also the ball field that he's putting in there for the kids.
What, is there, Julian, is there any thought for, any need for retent, or retention pond?
Yes, there is, there is, on the submitted plan, there's a detention pond over there.
So they'll need access to that to get, okay.
That's all, that, all those semantics are definitely gonna be worked in.
That'll be worked into your final, I get it.
That's.
Norm, I, I appreciate our attorney's time, but I think with this, unless I'm, I don't see a need to go to a ZBA. Anybody else on the board?
I don't. And then I think she clears that up.
Yeah.
Second page. The second paragraph. No.
Yeah, in the last sentence. It's required by statute, if I may through the chair. Statute of regulation to state the reasons for it to be in detail. And I can't see us providing that.
That's just the law. You deny it, you have to give reasons to say.
Yeah. Why can't she really see a reason for denying it?
Well, she says in the last sentence, Norm, of the last paragraph, therefore, in my opinion, a new yield plan for the proposed land area would be required. Well, that's what we got.
That's what we got.
So I'm.
So on, on that one and the first paragraph on the first page, the last sentence. Again, the owner may be able to apply for a new special permit for the weekend for your lot, you know.
Okay, I think. Get your paperwork done.
You do, I think you do have, if I may, we do have someone from the public.
Okay, uh, just quickly, you said you have sent this to Quinn?
This, this, uh, this one, we're done with Quinn, for the lot. Carl has, has this. But he doesn't have any, anything else. Now just to touch minorly on the Quinn letter. All these are very addressable simply, but I haven't gone through that until we went through tonight. So we'll get this all done, along with the special permit for, this is our first piece.
Quinn letter, am I missing that?
Dated July fifth.
Any other thoughts from the board on this?
September four.
Has everybody signed in, by the way?
Didn't know there was a spot too.
It's on the table before, oh, it's in a different office.
Yeah.
Thank you for helping out our effort.
Nothing else from the board?
No.
I, no, I can't think of anything at the moment.
Anything from the public?
Camera can't talk.
It listens.
It sees everything.
This is kind of interesting because this was a continuation of a hearing for the Maple Hill Estates. Where it appears to me, we're leaving it is, okay, we're not doing anything with Maple Hill Estates yet. The only thing we're waiting for is, are gonna be, is the revised estate lot.
I would prefer, just because we're sort of starting from scratch, and this is my opinion of the board, to close this and, and deny this is what was put before us. Shut this whole, or maybe not, I don't know what we can do.
We can't do that unless you want to give reasons specific and then I can fix it and you have to approve it. That's not the right thing, just extend it.
Yeah, but we're doing something completely different than what was submitted to us, right? That's my problem with this.
We extend this and we get the other part done.
Extend the hearing to.
Yeah, for.
Otherwise.
Six weeks.
Why would you want to deny and go through all that? It's legal, it's all kinds of crazy.
The paperwork for the new estate lot in Form A. That gets, we have to have a hearing, so you have to, I have to get everything in, it might not be in two weeks because of the time that you need for your advertising, so it might be a month from now. So we have that, that's open, closed, that's behind us and now this is almost, this is ninety-eight percent done. Quinn, I'll match all of Quinn's comments in the meantime, because there's a lot of stormwater and, and other semantics that I have to get through. Now that I know we're going this direction, I'll put the time into this. And Dave also has a, his number, comment number five is, is the typical conditions of why an open space is a whole summary of things, we'll get that all done. So we continue this hearing for, I'd say, three meetings from now. We'll be a lot closer, that's like six weeks, closer to having Quinn's letter possibly completely addressed.
And recorded.
Oh, no.
This isn't, this isn't my fault, this is just, this guy, I didn't even know this was an estate lot. I traded a piece of land that I didn't even trade yet. The planning board proved that, I drew a subdivision within it, which is, which is legal to do. So, I mean, right now, we're just fixing an issue that happened that nobody even caught back then.
Well, we've cut it now, so.
Right.
I just.
Three, three meetings from now is October twenty-second.
I, I guess the reason I'm saying, I, I don't know, we re-advertise, because this is a significant change from what was submitted and put to the, the public when we opened this hearing.
No, it's the same, it's the exact same.
This is, this is the plan that was.
Haven't changed a thing.
This was the plan, so actually, this is, here's the access to the open space, it's on this side.
Oh, okay.
We have plenty of room to make this all fit. This is not, this is not changing at all. Other than a couple of, a couple i's and cross a couple t's to, to Carl. But these are the lots, here's the houses, here's, that's, that's what it's gonna look like.
So let's, let's, let's play out your scenario, if you were to deny it, what would be the reason?
Because I don't feel like it. Next question.
Oh, you don't feel like denying it?
Yeah, no, I don't feel like passing it, that's just.
See, that, that's, that's.
That doesn't play, I know.
But that's the point, you gotta, you gotta put more reasons specific down.
We'll go backwards.
Well.
And then, then I have to appeal, and then I have to go to court and then I have to, it's, it's.
No, Cle, no, I, I like what you're doing. I'm just trying to figure out, because my concern isn't, isn't getting, I, I like what you're doing, don't get me wrong, I like what's going on. I just wanted the opportunity for the public to know what's going on.
They do, they were here at the last meeting, they know all about this.
Yeah.
We made a presentation, the town gave it's red stuff, everybody gets, it was.
Okay.
And they're not even here tonight, so.
And it's gonna be posted on your board, wherever your board is.
Yeah, I do.
This is the meeting that's supposed to be at, the continuing. Everybody knows, once you stop and continue.
They should be in the planning board room, right, Dick?
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Where the posted is just.
You know, you can make this your room, we'll move the files in here, put a screen up and, hey, this is a nice spot. You got your own kitchen?
Because we don't have any control over.
Library trustee.
Yeah. Library trustee, yeah.
We have no control over this. Yeah, this is not a town-owned. Anyhow, okay, I'm fine with it, I just was trying to make sure that somehow.
I, I don't, I don't think there's anything to be gained by denying.
Oh, I, if not denying it, I'm just looking for a reason to somehow to notify. I don't want to, I don't want to get rid of this, I just want somehow to figure out.
He's being recorded.
We're gonna be notifying all these same exact abutters.
That's true too.
All these same abutters are gonna be notified because of the special permit for Dave.
Good point, thanks.
They're all gonna know.
All right, Julian, I'm good and I'm fine, I just, you, that's a good point, excellent point.
So if I may ask, do we need a motion to continue this hearing?
Three, three times.
Okay.
And we also need to extend the decision date.
The final action deadline. Off of the subdivision. Which would not want to coincide with the final meeting, but sometime after was to incorporate time to write a decision and all that. I don't know if I have the calendar with us for the next meetings or not.
Oh, yeah, we don't have a calendar here either.
We got one.
Next meeting's October twenty-second, October twenty-third, twenty-fifth.
What do you want? That's not gonna happen.
That'll work. Dave, what are you looking for?
The calendar for the plan, next planning board meetings until the end of the year.
Till the end of the year?
Yes, that's.
So we have October eighth, twenty-second, and twenty-second is the third meeting that Julian was talking about. And then we have November twelfth and twenty-sixth, but where's Thanksgiving, I don't know if that's gonna screw up, no, maybe not. And December tenth and twenty-fourth, and I would say the twenty-fourth is out.
Yeah, twenty-fourth is a standard holiday, so we might, what's that?
It was not scheduled as a meeting day.
Okay. Is the twenty, because usually the twenty-fifth, is that Thanksgiving usually?
Twenty, probably the twenty-first. Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, so then we're fine with the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
I suggest a second meeting in November.
Yeah.
The twelfth.
I'm going away for Thanksgiving, so I.
Second meeting in November is the twenty-sixth.
I'm not gonna be, is that a Tuesday night?
Tuesday night.
I won't be here then.
I won't, I won't be here for the first meeting, twelfth.
So I'll just go to December, the first meeting.
First meeting in December would be better, if you're correct. So is that the time you're gonna make a decision?
No.
Or the time you're gonna have to record?
It's just continuation of the hearing.
Oh, so that's the next time we have a hearing?
Yeah.
In December?
I thought that was so that to make a decision. I'd like to come back in like three weeks to talk about this after I get Quinn off that. October twenty-second.
You can extend it to December, but can we have the public hearing on, on the twenty, on, you know, you might do it before then, you know what I mean? I don't care, but.
I guarantee we're not gonna have the public hearing on the twenty-fourth.
I'm not keen on doing anything more with the subdivision until we have the estate lot considered.
Squared away, I agree with you on that one. I want that state lot.
That's gonna take a month plus. Between advertising and everything else.
All right, that's fine, yeah, 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 I understand. All right, that's fine, yeah, 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 I understand, yeah.
So you want to still leave October twenty-second for the next meeting?
For the estate law. Yep.
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta file.
Yeah, but it's October twenty-second. You did a, I'll have it all filed before then. We could probably make the next meeting. It's all done, it's just a matter of putting the stuff together, so.
Yeah, but we won't get, we won't get it advertised by then, there's no way.
So in two weeks, if I bring everything in two weeks and you guys advertise, I bring this in in two weeks to your next meeting, the whole package, the following meeting could be plenty of time, two weeks later to, to do the hearing for the estate law.
On October?
No?
Fourteen days.
Fourteen or the ten?
It's fourteen.
Fourteen. So then I gotta get it to you next week, and then we can advertise. We could do that.
As soon as possible, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get it, I know what I'll.
You mean advertise for October eighth?
Right.
That one for you.
If everything goes to plan, eight, the eighth of October, it's like it's a feasible date, if not, it would have to be the twenty-second, depending on.
So we try that.
That's what mission is received.
Okay.
That's for the estate law.
Yes.
For the estate law.
And you're extending the deadline, have you talked about that yet?
No, we haven't done that yet.
Subdivision, we gotta, we gotta extend it, if I was a betting man, I would extend it at least till December tenth.
Decision or public hearing?
Public hearing. Decision's not gonna happen until.
December tenth. It's all gonna be perfect.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, then we do the public hearing till December tenth, and then the time to file after that, right? Because if you just extend it to the.
First, first, uh, meeting in January for the deadline, how about that?
Yeah, because, I mean, assuming everything goes smooth on the eighth, um, we wouldn't have the decision and the sign off.
If that's how you want to go, I might go maybe, with a flexibility of need be, but if that's what you want, I'm sure if it's.
Second meeting?
That might be more prudent if it's a gray one.
As it, as it does.
Final action deadline to the second meeting in January.
Which is the twenty-first.
That's completely up to you guys, I don't.
That's twenty-eighth of January.
Oh, twenty-eighth?
You have to have time to write it up, get it, and then file it with the clerk. You don't want to have the same day as the, as the day you extend to, so yeah, whatever's, whatever's good.
I'd rather have us take a look at it on the fourteenth, if it's good, than have Dave do the final for the twenty-eighth, you know, do a draft like on the fourteenth. I mean, or maybe it's the seventh and the twenty-first, I can't, no, it's the fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
You ain't putting any concrete in January anyhow in the ground.
Oh, no, I'm not worried about it. Although I started a big one.
Especially if them farmers are out this year. A lot of snow, a lot of ice.
So, so, I'm sorry, so when we come the next time, it's gonna be for the special permit.
Special permit's yours.
Can I ask everybody here at this, is there anything else that you're looking for so we don't waste your time or my money?
I like option two. No, I'm, I, I, I mean, I, I'd like what is being done, I, from my perspective, I just want, I just want to get it, I just want to get the other one out and this one in.
So, everything we talked about is good for you for the special permit?
For me personally, yeah.
What Julian needs to do.
Good for me, I like it.
Just so we don't come back and play our games again.
Tenth.
No.
Tomorrow's the big day.
Know what I mean?
Yeah.
Bill Kleeg, don't worry, he will.
He'll take it all by a whole piece of paper with a highlighter. He will.
I'm old school.
Okay, so the continuing hearing to.
For eight hundred dollars, I can sell you a screen over there. You can put in your office and hold it.
Public hearing twelve-ten.
You guys aren't using it anymore, is it up for sale?
I thought the next meeting was October eighth.
It is.
This is for the open space design option in the subdivision.
Oh, okay, open space.
To December ten.
Okay, and final action.
I'd say January twenty-eighth.
To.
That'll give us time.
Do you know what our final action date presently is?
Yeah, May eighth to the end of September-ish.
End of September-ish.
I, I don't have, what, if you do the calendar, it's May eighth plus one thirty-five.
As long as we have the, the two date, should be good enough, right?
Well, right now, we're at like one twenty-two, so I can't do the math here.
Oh, hold on a second, we're at one twenty-two today, and how many?
Give or take, give or take.
And then, uh, it's probably September twenty-fourth is what you're thinking is.
Okay.
That's, that's fourteen days from now, that'd be one thirty-six, and you said one thirty-five?
I think we're at one twenty-two, I didn't do the exact count from May eighth to now.
Maybe, uh, May eighth was when I filed it.
The subdivision, yeah.
You already had me filing a, you already had me sign an extension already.
For the, for the hearing date, this is the first time we're doing an extension.
No, you had, for the date, date of decision.
No, positive.
Really?
We just had the extension.
Then it's conditionally approved. It's way past the sixty days. You had me sign it the last time I came, Dave, I know you did. You, you wouldn't know, grabbed me and had me sign one. You already extended to today.
Yes, we extended it to the hearing date.
No, the, the date to make a decision to today.
Okay.
I signed one of those pieces of paper last time. So, um, just extend it out to whenever you want to extend it, and I'll sign it.
Okay.
You don't know your own efficiency.
It's kinda hard when you jump from office to office and have your stuff.
Your shot, I've been doing enough. You gotta get one in for the public.
Ah, it's all right, you're doing good.
Yeah, thanks.
Now, my blood pressure's come down. You didn't want me to crank it back up?
No, no, I don't. Yeah, I'm all synced up, I don't get, need to get out of sync again.
I'll have to go knock on Joe's door for a while and beg him to let me mow the heights so I can calm down.
Yeah, it's getting pretty over the roof up there.
Consider the hearing.
You get some small trees kicking up there.
The final action deadline.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to do, uh, all works too, so.
Sign, seal.
Next month.
Get rid of those trees.
Ex, I can't cut it either.
The front is that way.
Yeah, I know, I've asked Joe if I can cut those trees.
Jesus Christ. It can't be advertised, you know, eh?
Hey, hey, can we have our, can we have our paperclip things, because you know, that's, that's town property.
It has issues.
I'm kidding.
So, does Dave have to sign this too? Just me, so, would you put the name of my company on there, or just the name of the project?
I put the name of the project, Maple Hill.
Okay.
I would say you should sign it though.
But I, I'll put.
So there's no.
So, so Blair Enterprises owns the project. They're, they submitted, I didn't, I, I'll just, because I signed as president, I, I don't know how else to sign, so.
Yeah, just put slash Blair Enterprises.
Yeah.
We want to make sure we hold you accountable.
Now you can't, I signed as president.
Excellent.
Is, is, what am I supposed to do?
There's a second one?
Yeah.
Yes, all right, number two.
For him to keep the ones. So, like, two places to sign on that.
Oh, shoot.
Better put Blair Enterprises. It's the attorney in me.
Believe you. Those things stick.
George was here, he'd make sure that, uh, put my whip to you.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Now it's all leaving.
It's up to you to take care of him from now on, you know?
I will. You got the home ready?
So you want to stick around for the Bryce Lemon B?
Why, it's, it's not on the agenda.
Uh, we got a report.
There was something on there.
Came in September. I don't know if it's on the agenda, let me look.
Are we closed?
Uh, we need to make a, we need to make a motion.
Yeah, we gotta make a motion.
So I'm, I'll make a motion to continue it to.
To October eighth?
October.
Right. Seven o'clock.
Wait a second, I thought this was till twelve-ten.
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 The other discussion for October was for the special permit for the state law.
I'll make a motion to continue it to whenever it was said.
December tenth.
I'll second.
December tenth.
That's for this, yes. Special permit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
She seconded, actually.
Oh, sorry.
Give her due credit.
At seven o'clock, you said. Okay.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's the tenth?
Tenth. So this part of it's tenth. So what was the eighth?
Special permit, right?
I think that.
So I'm up.
You're up next. Well, the Duncan, the bridge is gonna kill that, because they're, they're passing on.
Yeah. To get rid of the, the state law.
Hold on a second. Your CC, these are me.
Until you have a submission.
Carl, she's pretty good.
That's on the eighth.
You're sending an email a couple days ago.
On the special.
Depends on what's filed.
Email them right away.
Either that or the second meeting in October, depends on what's filed.
Julian, you say you're gonna file that?
I got that, that's just a site test.
Today's the only Tuesday, you should, you'll file it Friday.
Yeah, I thought it was, I submitted a claim.
No, it's just certain inspection.
Didn't he say ninety-eight percent was done?
Yes.
I heard that.
Did you hear that?
I heard it.
Why can't he get from my father?
Yeah, great, great.
But I hear the guy's not cheap.
Next, but he's gonna walk under the camera again.
Close now, I'm gonna make a motion.
Yes, we voted, so it's all settled.
Thank you.
I'll see you later.
Motion for extending the final deadline to.
Oh, uh, January twenty-eighth, January twenty-eighth, also moved.
Well, so good.
Any discussion on that one?
No.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, uh, another continuation of a public hearing. Uh, this is for, uh, project two fifty-nine to two sixty-one, Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts, special permit for this food restaurant.
Move to continue?
And, well.
We have a letter to withdraw.
Oh. Is that what that? Didn't see it signed, I saw that, but.
Yeah, it's in the package.
Yeah, I didn't see that as a withdrawal.
It's on this.
Yeah, yeah. Ooh, so they're pulling out, huh?
They're pulling out altogether?
Yes, the applicant's withdrawn, the petition, as the board, that was previously submitted to the board.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this?
So.
Yes, we have to vote to grant the applicant's request.
They're not coming back, then?
Yeah, look, go ahead.
I, I guess that is, that is an unknown, uh, at this point, however, uh, I did talk with, uh, Mike Nicholson, and, uh, he sort of indicated that they probably will be coming back with probably something substantially different.
I'm okay with the draw.
So they have gone to see Mr. Blair about buying the other house and then taking up all the property across the street?
Absolutely no idea.
Nope, they haven't seen me. I named my dad.
So if the lease runs out, we're out of Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, I mean, yeah, um, just, just to let you people know that when I went to District Three, and I, I was talking about that this was coming up, and I says that, you know, right now we have a problem with the traffic backing into, onto one twenty-two A, and he says, what? And he says, has anything been done about that? And I said, no. Says, does not, does the planning board have a special permit issued to them? If so, in that permit should be the fact that no traffic can be backed up onto, onto, oh, he was very insistent about that, that the business will be shut down if they find out that this is happening, they will shut it down.
Happened this morning on my way to work.
It happens every morning, almost. So, but, I told him, to the best of my knowledge, I don't remember ever issuing a special permit for Dunkin' Donuts.
ZBA did in those days.
Yes.
It was all ZBA.
So.
So this is ZBA's responsibility to close Dunkin' Donuts?
Well, if it's written up as such.
Yeah, my guess is they didn't. That, that's a pretty specific requirement.
But do we know for fact?
No, we don't.
Should we ask?
I would like the, uh, town planner to send a letter to ZBA requesting if there was such a, a special permit made for Dunkin' Donuts.
Or the orders of condition?
Orders of conditions or anything like that.
If you like, I would think the search of registry deeds would show, we know the town clerk would show whether there's any filings.
Well, ask the town clerk.
Yeah, if, if, yeah.
Didn't they deny that and they had to go to court or something? I don't even remember.
Yeah, there was a lawsuit, they want the, the drive-through thing was.
Yeah, was the, the contention.
Yeah, it still is.
Because of traffic. Yeah, and that's the one thing, if, if this hearing was gonna be still on, and I read I read way back where they didn't feel a traffic study needed to be done, I beg to differ because of the location of Palmer Gussit and that.
I would certainly see that a, uh, traffic study would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Well, then I guess we just need to get the final orders of condition for that, if there was a special permit or anything associated, because if there was a court hearing, that would've had to be recorded or given to our town clerk, correct?
Correct.
It wasn't a, um, special permit at that time. Cause I was on the ZBA then, it was, it was, um, it wasn't for this, but I was on right after, it was a, um, site plan approval. That's what the ZBA did.
Yeah.
And it was approved by a judge.
Yeah, cause the, cause the, the ZBA denied it, and then it went to court and the judge overruled the ZBA.
Well, we should've found out his findings, because if he put anything in there about traffic.
I think the whole idea was traffic, wasn't it?
That's why he had to cut it.
That's why it went to...
Kalman's engineer fabricated some information and the judge didn't like it.
I don't wanna know that, really.
That's the truth.
I don't wanna know that.
I was involved, I remember. Well...
I just, to your point, Dick, I just like to find out, because if that's something...
We should know, because if, if it does come back to us, I want, wanna have a little bit of background, so...
Yeah.
You know, the, the background wouldn't hurt, but, I mean, first of all, it wasn't an action by us.
No, it was not.
You know, in any way, so I don't see the reaching enforcement.
No, Will would have to do it.
But we could suggest the will, because now special permits not come through us, not the ZBA anymore. I mean, I don't know. I, I don't want this falling through a crack, because this is what seems to happen in this town, it's the, uh, it's not my authority at all, I mean, I just think, since we already control special permits now, we should, I'm not saying tell Will what to do, but have him check into it, depending on what we find from the clerk. From any court filings or anything to do with traffic.
Sure, we could look it up for the board's information.
Yeah, just information.
Sure, how it affects a future project that will come to the board, which based upon its own merits may need a traffic study, but for information's purposes, sure.
Yeah, that's all.
I mean, uh, ZBA told them how to build a house over there, I mean, it had to be like that, because that's the original shape of the...
Design of the houses.
The house was designed like that originally.
So do we need to have a motion to withdraw, um, the petition?
Actually, I suppose we could...
You need a law.
I so move to accept the withdrawal...
Yeah.
Petition of...
Of...
Yeah, it doesn't have a name.
Whoever it is.
It's branded realty group.
The, uh... Exactly what she said. It's being written down. As of September tenth, twenty nineteen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um...
So you gotta sign this norm and then take it over to, um...
The town clerk.
Yeah. Nita's gotta sign off on this.
There's no dates to put in here.
Oh, it's right next to your name.
Yeah, but, I mean...
Would it be from when they, when they came in with it and the two is today?
The following two would only be if it were continuance or postponement.
Correct. Oh, I see. So the below with, they've already got that in there for the withdrawal request, scheduled date, and somebody put in September tenth, twenty nineteen.
Because the meaning, the matter was continued to this date.
Yeah, okay. And their agent signed it the day before, just saying that they agree.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Now let's get to the fun part.
Okay, um... I would assume we still need to probably officially close the public hearing?
No, the hearing, it was withdrawn, since it was withdrawn, the hearing, there's no action for the hearing. Withdrawn, the withdrawal's gonna take precedence over a hearing.
Okay.
Uh, the withdrawal is the final action in this case.
And that's why it's been signed off on.
Which disposes of the matter.
Yeah.
Because it's...
Okay.
Excellent.
That's good for me. Okay, onward, uh... Under other, number two, local planning assistance, CMRPC.
Well, before we do that, what about the subdivision development section for Bryce Lemon Estates?
Oh. Okay, um...
We got a...
We do have a Quinn report, I believe.
Yes. And there's a bullet in there that I'm not excited about. Number four. Cause, oh, I know, but we don't have our sidewalks and our rail trail finished, do we?
No, we don't.
No.
Uh, I've, I've heard about that in combat, too.
He raised your shoes, right?
Yep. It's, uh, was part of the packet now?
Yeah, I know.
It's, uh...
Is this, this is just him making a site visit, right? I submitted a, a letter to him that Julian did, uh, we responded to all his comments from... I didn't know you were talking about this tonight, I didn't bring anything with me.
Uh, he asked for a, uh, test?
They're all done. Rest will be done in the morning.
Compaction test?
Compaction test will be done for the top six inches tomorrow morning, it being done at, I, I called Kyle and I said, told him he could witness it, he didn't, he didn't come today, or, I don't know if he'll come tomorrow, but we're gonna do the balance of the compaction test on the gravel tomorrow, and we're ready to pay him. I think we did some sidewalks today, if I tell you the truth. It's Mike Crusel, Kyle, he said he was gonna start doing it, so...
As I said, Norm, I've got some problems with some of the bullets here.
Okay, what?
Number four, foundation has been constructed on lot thirty-seven R and seventy-six R in phase two.
Right.
Clearing grading has been done on lots in phase two. My understanding, there was no phase two construction supposed to start until, A, sidewalks are completed, B, rail trail is finished. Am I, am I wrong in that aspect?
I think you are, I asked Dave to look into that, to the specifics of, uh, what we said, and I believe it either, I believe it pertain to occupancy permits.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
If that is a true statement?
Are you mistaking?
Hmm?
Are you mistaking?
I don't know. That's why I asked Dave to look into it, I'm not sure if he had a chance to or not.
I did not have a chance to look into it, I've seen and recalled that with the, uh, with the covenant and the bond reduction that applies to phase two, that that authorized sort of work to commence, but no buildings to be occupied until other things were met.
If, if we release the covenant, pretty much, yes, he can build.
But we asked also to have those other two things done.
We, we had, I believe we had a...
A letter signed by him stating sold.
I was gonna do one July first and the other one September first.
Correct.
So I, I did, I talked to, I talked to you guys, not, I maybe just know them or Dave, but I did, I did tell you I wasn't gonna make the July first deadline, but I thought I would make it in August, but it's taken us a little bit longer to get everything squared up at the, I don't know if you've been down there lately?
Last week.
Did you see where we've...
Mark.
Put the sidewalks back up to grade, and Mike Crusel told me he was gonna start paving in there, so, so I, I think some of them might even be done now. We're gonna, we're gonna leave, the only part we're not gonna do is in front of the houses on the left that are being constructed right now, because they'll ruin the berm.
Oh, that's fine.
Whole berm, if you go down there, the berm is all laid out, and, um, we're gonna put the berm in the sidewalk and, and, and it should be, I, I think Mike told me he was starting today, maybe even not yesterday.
Are you planning on doing the final coat of pavement as well?
Yes, not just yet, we're gonna do the base coat, we're gonna be ready for base coat after tomorrow in phase two. So we're probably gonna base coat that first, then, we're gonna probably wait, we're gonna try to do the whole thing at once, but we'll probably wait maybe another two or three weeks before we get a little further on those houses down there, before we actually do the top coat on the other side, on the other section. I was gonna try to get it on the fall town meeting if I had everything up to speed, but I don't think I'm gonna make it, I really don't.
I know you won't.
Yeah. Based on the way Bear Hill went. I won't make it, but, but it'll, it'll be ready for spring.
So let me ask about a, uh, the rail trail portion that was supposed to be done September first.
This, it's already kinda done, I mean, you know that, right? There is, there is, I tell, I know I said this before, but there's a path you can walk right from the back of the detention pond, you go around the detention pond, and go right out to the rail trail, can't you?
You can, you can, but on the map it showed it across the, the dike.
Where? I'm not totally familiar with, I didn't know honestly, that you could connect to that rail trail, after, is that right where that stump was?
Yes, yeah, that, that's the pathway, yeah.
There's, there's a four-wheeler path right there, that you can easily walk from...
It was a cop path, originally, that's where Eugene used to run his escalator, all those playthings.
Four-wheeler onto the rail trail.
Yep.
It's, so it's kinda connected, but it's not, it's not officially put in where they, where they drew it, but...
Then we need a plan that does show exactly where...
Yes, that was, I was gonna get it.
It's on the plan. It was on the plan.
We can do that, Clay, it sounds good, we can make that, make a plan.
Yeah.
They're saying it's not exactly where it's shown on the plan.
Not right now, but I could put one there, but I...
It's gonna go, it's gonna, looking at the, the rail trail from this road, it's gonna be on the left instead of on the right.
But you, there's an access drawn on the set of plans.
And it's on the right, going through right where that stump was.
Yeah.
But we're gonna come around the other way now, cause the pond get extended through there. It'll be there, there's a, there's a perfect spot for it. It's gonna go right over the top of the, the berm of the, of the detention pond, which will be actually kinda nice.
All right.
And we'll show it, I can draw, I can show you where that's gonna fall.
I'll tell you, there's, there's not too many people having a problem getting on the rail trail from there, I can tell you that. They walk right over to it.
I'm just making sure I's are dotted and T's are crossed, that's all I wanna do, cause I guarantee you this will be brought up when you wanna get the road approved.
Oh, God, yeah.
So, I'm gonna let you connect to that, that's one of them, was fighting everybody down the line, you can't, you can't access a rail trail unless you go to one of the parking lots. Is that over, did they?
Let's put it this way, um, where the heck did she have to get permit from?
Mema?
No.
Anicor?
I know.
You got a permit from Anicor, I got a permit from DCR, I got a permit from DEP, they need a full, what quality cert?
Anyway, one of them had it in their, in their, in their stuff for you, that it had to be in there, the rail...
That was the me, that was that, uh, Mema.
Mema.
Mepa, yes.
Environment Policy Act. Yeah, it was there, in that, in their thing.
Yeah, cause I read that, went, went through it.
Yep.
I'm just thorough, paying the ass.
Just another thing before you, uh, get too busy on sidewalks, uh, we had questioned Joe Buckley about the portion of that sidewalk that is not gonna have the grass strip.
Yeah.
And he wants to see some sort of a DOT-approved wooden guardrail along that stretch.
Okay, that's what Gary wanted too, right? I still complain that that's, doesn't make sense, but...
Well...
Right now I'm putting in four hundred, I just, uh, hired a guy to put in four hundred and seventy feet of guardrail, which is on the plan, we're gonna be doing it, so, maybe I can get a, I'll get ahold of Joe and see exactly where he wants it.
The other thing I just happened to notice a few times down there is, uh, street trees, some are there, some aren't.
One died. I went down there yesterday and the leaves were all...
So...
Cause this is a perfect time to plant them, better than in the summer, cause otherwise you end up...
Is there any way that Dave can bring, bring the map up of Bryce Lemon on the, on the screen?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but it'll be a little kinda reddish.
Yeah. Up on the end there in phase two, when you drive up on the left-hand side, there's a lot of fill going in there, bringing fill up, is that the, the back yards of those houses?
Yeah, actually, it's pretty much done, it's at footing level right now.
At footing level?
The whole left side of the road, if you're coming up the road, is all at footing level right now.
All right, so you're gonna have, what, two or three foundation heights?
Nope. No, that's why we put the fill in, and I have it all certified, I have all the testing from Yankee all done, and I'll give it to Willie when he, when he's looking for it, but, it is, I mean, lot thirty-four is twenty-eight foot cut, still. Imagine that? There's some, there was, there was a pretty big hill over there.
Yeah.
What's?
Both sides, I mean, it was up on the banking side and, and down on the other end of it, when we drove up at that time, you know, there's a lot of fill that brought up in there.
There's a foundation right up there.
Yeah, and the foundation, yeah.
Norm, the only other one I've got, which I'm not sure of, I don't know if this is a positive, negative, or what's Carl trying to say, on the back page, second, the first bullet says, "The swale along the low portion of phase two that diverts runoff towards DP two appears to have been moved away from Woodside Avenue closer to erosion control."
So we have, right now, it's a, it's a big steep banking like this. So what we did was, we dug a ditch all along the back that goes right into the detention pond, so when the water comes off the hill, it goes into the ditch, diversion ditch, it goes into the detention pond. What happened was, when we built lot seventy-six, with the ditch was right through the middle of it, so we moved the ditch back so that it would still collect the runoff, so it wouldn't get into the lot. That's a good, by the way.
All right, I just, he's got a comment.
No, I understand.
But he doesn't say anything if it's good, bad, or indifferent, so, I'm trying to figure out what the heck is he, if it's a comment, I'm okay with that.
That's strange, because I wrote, is this okay or not?
Yeah, I'm the same, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out as well. All right, I'm fine. Good enough, yeah, you need to clean the sediments, get them bad.
I know.
He makes that every time. Sure the town will sell you a row, cheap, uh, street sweeper.
Okay, anything more about Bryce Lemon?
The only thing is, I wanted to know what this board could have done about this, I don't know what the, this lawsuit was or anything else, and, uh, to me, for kind of loud, it was like, it was a kick in the ass, to be at a select boards meeting and, and hear about it.
What's, so is this...
For the first time, and, and to me...
Is there a lawsuit at Bryce Lemon?
There was, the town, the town said that we were right, and they didn't even go to court with us.
Can I get an idea what it was even about?
So what we did was, we challenged the bylaw, we challenged, said that we have an approved plan that is under the zoning that was, uh, in effect at the time the plan was approved or amended, twenty fourteen. And zoning is frozen for eight years past that. And the town agreed, the town's attorney agreed with that, am I overstating that, Dave, or is that pretty much?
I still haven't seen a settlement, I know very, I know this from more the outside than anything else.
So basically, we can get any, as many permits as we want and...
In Bryce Lemon?
In Bryce Lemon, that's the only one we asked for, cause it's the one we're working on.
Okay.
But in our opinion, everything we have is frozen.
Okay.
And I don't know, I, I was watching, I found out at the selectmen's meeting, you know, I was watching it on TV, and they said that all of the lots were exempt, so I think that there was like, they said there was two hundred lots, I think.
Yeah, they mentioned something about two hundred lots, and I had no idea, uh...
Neither do I, I mean, that's what, you know, why are we out in the dark about this?
Well, I mean, I, I found out about that ruling by watching the selectmen's meeting on TV.
I mean, I found out about it earlier, but I didn't know about any of the other stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So...
Can we ask our illustrious planner to help us through this, since I, I don't have TV to the select board, and honestly, I can't get there on Monday, so, I'd just like to know where, is there a decision, is there something?
Well, there's definitely a decision by the court that, uh, at least Bryce Lemon is exempt from the growth management bylaw.
Okay.
Then I, I would like to have KP Law come to us at a next meeting and state that. I am, I am tired, why are we in the dark about this? Why?
When we got to this, Dick, I was hoping our select board person that was here was gonna be here, so I could turn and ask him, but he...
He didn't state that he was here, so, no...
Yeah.
I didn't even turn...
Jeff Stillings was here, I was gonna ask him that exact question when we got to this, is there any chance the select board could give us, all I want is a synopsis, I don't need the whole dang ruling, just give me a, uh, what I call an executive summary of what's going on, so, this board, not just to me, I'm into the board, so we can understand what's going on.
That should come from the town administrator.
Yes, that would be nice, too, either one of them, I would like to see a executive summary of what's going on, because, a- as I mentioned to a few people, um, we signed that, so therefore, I would like to know if there's any legalities or anything against Bryce Lemon or for Bryce Lemon, cause my name's on that signature of that subdivision, so I wanna know if there's any legal action coming against it.
And did we do something right or something wrong, or is it, you know?
You don't have to...
I don't, I don't, I don't think there is anything that could've been done different, that's my own personal opinion.
I would...
We wrote a bylaw, Attorney General has approved it.
Oh, I didn't know that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's a legal bylaw.
I need to send to no, uh, email.
It's just, it's just a question of, there are a string of other actions, deadlines, facts, that mean that at least that subdivision is not covered under it.
I filed a lawsuit against the entire bylaw as well, we're filing for depositions and everything, we're gonna depose everybody in the town, it's gonna cost the town a million dollars for this lawsuit, and, and it's crazy.
Yeah, the thing is, that, at least apparently from what I heard and listened to the selectmen, Yeah, the thing is, that, at least apparently from what I heard and listened to the selectman, there were three parts to this lawsuit. They have gotten an answer to two of them. One of them apparently is still pending, I don't know what those are.
And couldn't we have fixed this by just bringing the bylaw back to the committee?
Probably not.
Only somebody suggested that at town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, if somebody would have suggested that, maybe, at town meeting. An individual, maybe.
Name Tim.
Yeah.
That would have been a great thing, but that's, uh, I just sent you the message, but there it is. I had it on my email, so I just sent that to you.
Oh.
I just sent that email, that's the, that's the bylaw review.
Oh.
September sixth, maybe I didn't get it in my email.
But, you know, it's, um, I don't know, I, I, I don't know, I don't think that, I don't think the bylaw's gonna stand, you know?
Attorney General passed it.
Yeah, but, you know, she just, she says in her thing, she doesn't know if it will hold up in court. So, we're gonna find out, because, we're gonna go to court. It's my, it's our opinion that all of our subdivisions are exempt. It's our opinion, I said that before we ever took anybody to court. I asked for an opinion, the, the law firm didn't agree with me, then finally, when we have to go to court and spend all the money, and everybody's gonna spend money, they agreed. What we said right at the beginning. I mean, I just think that this law firm is spending the town's money, and they don't need to. If they just did the research like they were supposed to, they would have found exactly what we said. I wrote them an email exactly, right at the beginning, and I, I even copied Amy Kressler and to, so that she would have exactly what I said. And they didn't, they didn't agree. But then all of a sudden, they agree. And after, everybody spends all this money, you know? It's crazy.
This is, this is like putting a big question mark out there. Ah, Jesus.
You should have it in your email.
I'll read it tonight when I get home, because I, I just read enough there to say. There goes the school budget for this year.
Well, move on, but, uh, I feel that, uh, in the future, we better, we better get, be kept abreast.
Well, yeah, it might be just another thing to bring up.
Good night, guys.
Gentlemen, hey.
Town administrator at that meeting.
Yes.
Remember, Julian, that's two in a row.
Thank you.
Just, just say, by the way, and I realize that, uh, you know, there have been some good ideas. One of the things, uh, that is really kind of necessary for Dave to write the letter to the town administrator is to give some clues as to exactly what our concerns are. So anything further that you can come up with? So that.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna lower it on up there, lower the boom on him that night?
I don't wanna ambush him, no.
Come on!
I'm sorry.
He's a young, he's a young person, he can take it.
Are you, I mean, I, I gave a bunch, is that, I mean, you're okay with what I've got?
If, if you can think of something more.
I pretty much unloaded everything that I could think of right there.
It's a good list, it is a good list.
I just, I can't, I don't wanna, I, I, I mean, the guy's doing a good job, don't get me wrong, I just, in this instant, I think.
I think he's being pushed by other entities.
Oh, I, I get that, I do, but in this case, I think it was just a little bit not completely thought out of what happened. And, and I'm, I'm a little frustrated, because we're, we're taking the brunt of that.
Yeah, you're sure.
And I don't think so, I, anyhow.
Are we being punished? That's what's, that's what it feels like, in all honesty, it feels like that we're being punished.
Well.
Because we reversed our position on the bylaw.
I think the biggest thing for ground, and Merrill had it in there, and, and day one, when they, Dave said about the ceilings going up there, how, with a, one thermostat in the middle of the room, in the middle of the place, how are you gonna heat the, the individual rooms? How are you gonna do that?
Just think about downstairs and community hall.
Never, I will not think about that.
Bring in some propane heaters. A little CO2 for everybody.
And patio heater.
Yeah. Patio heaters, a little CO2 for everybody.
Yeah.
Or CO, CO2's fine, CO's what'll get ya.
I think maybe we oughta think about, uh, over to the community center.
Well, that's, that's, that design over there is in worse shape than one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that thing is a tough design, it wasn't well, well thought out.
I, I know where I can get some lumber.
It's gonna take a little bit more.
I know where there's plenty of help right here, and I think you guys can drive nails fairly straight. We'll make ourselves an office right in the middle of the room.
I've got two nail guns, if, if it's.
There you go.
We can put some compressors on that and get to it. Okay, let's keep going, we gotta get out of here tonight.
Number two, on the other local planning assistance, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
There's a report in here. Uh, it's already read. And.
I went down and talked to Trish about it. Says, uh, I can't remember how I, I worded it, it was and I say like twenty percent might have been, uh, you know, a hundred percent for planning board to take care of, but uh, the rest was split. And I feel that that's what we should do, is split thirty, seventy, seventy to the planning board, thirty percent to Dave.
Sounds fine to me.
Sounds good to me, too.
And Trish thought that was the best.
You buy that, Dave?
Yeah, I think thirty is appreciated, it gives some flexibility to planning staff. We're working on known projects that the planning was aware of, where we need the assistance, we don't have the time necessarily to wait. That's great, anything else would be a request of the planning board for the other, uh, from whatever entity wants to make it the request. So I'll just fill this out and send it in?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright. I'm good with that.
And just a side note on that, I cannot make, uh, quarterly meeting this Thursday, I have another meeting in this room here with the DCR, so if the delegate would like to go, if he has the opportunity, it's in Northborough.
Is this Thursday?
It's this Thursday. Alright, I will try to get it to you.
Okay.
Either that, or just go online, on there, just go right on their line, uh, webpage here, and you can bring it up. It's about planning.
It's about planning? What's that?
I thought Dave would be perfect with. Plan ahead, uh, you know.
Was this planned to root here, here to plan or something?
Yes, that's it.
That's the whole one.
Yep.
What time?
I think it, it should be in there, and I believe it was something like six thirty, but the stats at seven, seven to what? It's in Northborough, I believe it was at the public library.
Can't do that. Yeah.
If you get to, we'll take that.
So anyways, that, yeah.
So six.
Okay.
Send me, send me the, I put it into my life, came again.
So done with local assistance. Number three, Southern Worcester County Comprehensive Development Strategy, Dave?
So the, um, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is working with local and federal partners to create a economic development district for Central Massachusetts. As part of that effort, there's an application process involved. The CMRPC sought letters of support from the various towns and cities in the area. They requested that the town generate a letter of support. So what you have here is the letter of support, as well as the goals and objectives that are part of the economic development strategy. So this is more for information, uh, for the planning board's information. Just to be aware that we sent a letter of support on behalf of the town.
And, but I don't, I like this, but there is a paragraph missing which states that our town would be much better, uh, economically if Route Forty-nine was put in.
Still dreaming, aren't you?
Uh, yeah, I'm beginning to think it's, uh, not a bad idea, because I've been hearing some of the other towns now, who are starting to say, uh, if we had more traffic, and I'm talking about, you know, the western towns, because Forty-nine would have gone right up close to Long Pond if that neck of woods up through Gardner and attached.
So it would have made sense.
Yeah.
That would cut down my traffic on Fifty-six, that's for sure, right?
Yeah.
No more trucks coming by at three hundred miles an hour at night.
So anyways, no, it's good, I, I'm, I'm glad, you know? I think it's a good, alright, keep pushing.
Okay, number four, street acceptance procedure update.
Do we have any coming up in this, in this meet, in this, um, Fall Town meeting?
Yeah, um, the private was, uh,
Edith Lane?
Edith Lane and Kelly, was it, or something like that?
Yes, I think, yeah, yes, and.
Karen Way.
Karen Way, yes. Yeah. Uh, and, and I had also, I don't know if you watched it last, last night's meeting, but I also brought up, because I couldn't remember, the feller who was the owner of that originally, and, um.
Not in Israel.
Yeah, yeah. And it was his nephew that took over, I believe.
Yeah.
And I know the nephew came to the select board to give the rest of the property to the town.
And wouldn't take it.
And, because Skip was there, and Skip didn't want the town to be, you know? So I have no idea, I asked the, the board, have they been paying the taxes on the thing?
Nobody could answer it.
Nobody could answer it. So, um.
That's probably not something coming up for Fall Town meeting.
They were trying to push for it, yes.
Who? Israel, who was?
The, they're the people that live on here, it's a resident petition that's being pushed.
Oh, have they submitted a formal petition?
I thought they were in the process of doing that.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, do they gotta come through the planning board for that?
And that's why they were saying that, you know, the sooner you get cranking.
Yeah, we have to do a public hearing.
Yeah. Well, if they're talking October, first part of November for a town meeting, that's pretty close.
We'll, we'll see, see if they can do it, if not, it'll be.
Spring.
Which Dave has been working on a document to outline the procedure for acceptance, street acceptance, which is not gonna shed.
It's, it's a working draft, maybe it's eighty, ninety-five, ninety percent done, it's in the board's packet.
I didn't find that either.
Really? Thanks.
I was gonna say, um.
You sure it's not? It looks like this.
Anything about street acceptance, you know, anything new? What did it look like, Dave?
It looks like this, it's just a, it's titled Public Street Layout and Acceptance Procedural Checklist for Townways.
I got it.
I do, too.
I'm glad you put, uh, I'm glad you put months in here and not weeks.
Let me look in his file.
I like that.
Instead of weeks.
Yeah. I like that.
I did find it.
I'm glad you found it.
That's it, it's getting late.
I am looking for feedback on that first provision, if the board has some time that it would request an applicant come to the planning board prior to filing the layout plan with the select board. Because this is coming, I'm referring to Section A in particular. This is parroted out of the subdivision regulations, which adds a procedure for what an applicant has to do when they wanna have a road accepted as part of a subdivision, so I pulled that out of there to put it here into this document. If the board thinks it's, or does the board think it's a good idea?
Yeah, I do.
You have that review before they make the, uh, send the layout plan to the select board, and if so, what, how much time do you think?
Two months, too much? I like two months, because that's four meetings for us to get through it. What's that?
I was thinking four.
That's sixteen, that's sixteen meetings.
In other words, you know, our, our first glimpse of getting it. I just keep thinking of Bear Hill.
Oh, yeah, well, that took us months to get through that, okay, Norm, I, I agree with you then, I was, I was trying to be flexible with the applicant, but.
Maybe compromise on three.
I'm good for three. That's twelve meetings.
And.
But, but that's before they even go before the select board, a lot of times, we get it sent to us after it's already at the select board.
They're trying to do it both ways, the same time to the select board, they're gonna try to get it to us, too.
The, the thing is.
But.
You know, that, that, that three months is the beginning of the inspection process. Inspection process goes back and forth and back and.
Well, and we gotta talk to Quinn during that time, too, to make sure there's nothing open on the plans, we got a complete set of plans, they're as-built. You know, there's a whole bunch of things, so, yeah, three months.
And they have to submit as-built.
Yeah.
Those have to be reviewed.
Well, who's, who's they? It's the town?
No, 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 it's the applicant's gotta have as-built finished.
In this case, no. If he gave it up.
Oh, in that case, I'm just saying like a subdivision, if they, if we're, if, if, say, for example, Lenny was looking to get a subdivision group, he's gotta have the as-built before us.
Yeah.
But you are correct, if it's the town, then.
Yeah, that, that's a different story.
Yeah.
See, I'll, I'll tell you, we're, part of where I'm coming from, I kinda pushed Dave on this a little bit, is that, uh.
Bryce Lemon's gonna become a quick.
Bryce Lemon?
Yeah.
What I mean, but he gets that final coat of paving on Phase One.
And he's gonna wanna, wanna.
He's gonna want it, he doesn't want those sewer pump stations.
No.
So I, I'm okay with three months.
Anybody, any, anyone else?
Four years.
You said, so you said four months, right?
I originally said four, I think three is probably reasonable.
Okay.
I was thinking two, so I compromised at three.
For three. And I guess maybe another question is whether the board, what I, I put here, the applicant may request, I did that intentionally because the, the statutes only outline from filing the layout plan with the select board and onward. The statute doesn't identify any predecessor step.
And we need to put that together.
So I'm wondering if it's the applicant may, or, or is it the applicant shall? If this is a procedural checklist, it's more, it's some, someplace between, well, it's kinda like a regulation, but not.
I like shall.
So do I.
Yeah, shall.
This is more of a policy, maybe, than.
May, may gives that, gives the option to not do it.
See, I think this should be put in, as, as part of that, what's that new viewpoint system over there? Because isn't the, isn't that gonna be tied into all the departments of what's required?
Someday.
Someday, okay, sorry.
Once again, if I could, I can, okay, I, we can just digress here very quickly, the, the main thrust of viewpoint is a permit software system, more typical of the permits typically issued by the building department or by the Board of Health. So someone wants a permit to construct a new house, that type of permit. We have not figured out the best way to use it in the planning board context, which is not the typical context that viewpoint is used in. So to the extent we can bring this into it, we'd be glad to, but we don't, we haven't gotten there yet.
The only reason I, I asked that is because the way it was sold to the, the town was that this was a way of making sure that when, say, I don't know, John Doe goes to get a building permit, the building inspector can pull up the, uh, subdivision and see everything associated with it and see if it's legitimate. Is that still?
Father to support the building permit.
Yes, is that still?
Yes, if, for example, if, we could, yes, for example, if the, if there's a road in question, and we wanna show that the road was built correctly, then yes, this can be a supporting document to support a building permit, whether that should be issued or not, yes.
Okay.
I was, as opposed to how the planning board's gonna use it, we haven't determined that, but how the building department's gonna use it, this could be part of that, yes.
I just wanna make sure the building department has all the tools.
Correct, yes.
From all the different departments, the, the ConCon, the planning board, everything there, so, so at this point, Willie can look and say, uh, yeah, no.
Yes, all those kinds of documents can be attached to a given building permit.
Is that, I guess I'll ask the next question, is that operational now to attach that stuff to?
Yes, if there was a need to attach it, it could be. Right now, there's no projects that really fit the bill for a street acceptance, for example.
Oh, no, no, I was thinking, so, so, here's an example, third phase, Bryce Lemon cleat comes in, and I'm just using him as an example. And wants to get a building permit. Um, Will can pull up and say, you're not authorized to get a building permit, because you've still got a covenant on, uh, Phase Three. Is that documentation there to, to help him make, to make that decision?
Sure, the phasing plan can be uploaded, and the release of covenant can be both uploaded to viewpoint to support the issuance of permits for Bryce Lemon.
I hear it could be, I'm just asking, is it available at this point? I guess that's what I'm trying to find out.
Well, sure, the long and the short of it is, that if that's a PDF, that PDF can be attached to a building permit. If the building commissioner wants to request that as part of building permit review, then that PDF can be brought into the relevant building permit and used to review a given building permit, to make sure that it's in compliance with the subdivision regulations.
Alright, I just need to.
The building commissioner hasn't necessarily requested the, the covenant, the release of covenant, and not necessarily requested, uh, the street acceptance plan for Bear Hill, or anything else like that.
I just wanted, okay, I'll leave it alone, you know I'm going.
You're right, but, yeah, like Bear Hill and, uh, Bear Hill Two, we had issues up there, and before we could let things go.
Houses were getting built that shouldn't be built.
That is correct.
And, and my biggest thing is, on Bear Hill, is that in Bright, Brittenell Estates, there's houses that are built that shouldn't even be occupied at this point, because they're in Brittenell Estates, and it was not until the road went through and went out onto Brittenell, there wasn't supposed to be any houses in Brittenell Estates. And there is deed to houses in there that weren't Brittenell Estates. And that's all I'm trying to get at, is, is helping Will, so, okay, move on.
So shall request?
Yep.
Yeah. I'd say put it in shall, and if somebody says, no, you can't, well, then we'll do something different. Take the big bite first.
And then the rest of it is, is based upon guidance that we've received from town council for a street acceptance and the layout procedure. I've stripped out as much language as possible to just try to get to the core of it. When the time comes, we'll have a supporting document to give to the board, which is kind of like commentary that will accompany this. This is the public version. And there is references to the relevant statutes. And we're willing to help folks work with this on a one-on-one basis.
I'm curious, Dave, the, the section C, number one, it says the planning board's recommendation is non-binding. But then on two, it says the town cannot proceed to the next step until it has the planning board's report or 40, oh, or 45 days.
The or is the relevant part there.
Okay, thanks. That's what I want to see, the or, okay.
And that comes out of the statute.
Okay. Good, I'm fine.
However, I think in practicality, at least from my limited experience here, the, the community seems to be interested in what the planning board's assessment of a giving roadway is before doing anything.
Okay.
Why do we keep thinking that we held a public hearing on the acceptance?
I can check that. I, I put me, it could be a hearing. I'll check the last time on the last ones we did.
Yeah, and like I say, my memory...
I thought we did because that's when we got, that's when we had the, a lot of people coming in and stating their opinions. And we had to tell them that we would take their opinions and basically that helps us write a recommendation to the select board.
Like I say, I, you know, I don't, I, I'm not gonna say for sure if it wasn't a hearing or...
Which one was that?
I'll check that.
Wasn't that the road for the bridge at Bear Hill? Because of all of the unfinished sewers and the sewer and the, and the sidewalks and the driveways that were off. Didn't we have a public hearing and everybody came in and stated their opinion? I can't remember the name of the road.
I remember, you know, the comments coming in from the people and all that kind of stuff. I just don't specifically remember what it was.
All right. Either that or we're trying to keep the people up to date on what was going on.
You know, something like that.
All right. Dave, our number seven, vote approving the layout of plan filed with town clerk. Within 10 days must be good description in a book kept for that purpose. Needs to be done at least seven days in advance of any town meeting action on the question of acceptance of... How do you get it on a warrant is way before seven days of any town meeting. It's gotta get on a warrant, so...
The vote approving the layout plan is filed with the town clerk. Approving a layout is the first step.
Right.
Who within 10 days must record the description of the book. This needs to be done at least seven days in advance of the town meeting. If...
Should that be select board action instead of town meeting?
No, it's select, it is town meeting action for sure.
Okay.
But we have a visit from Mr. Crane.
But how do you...
You out of film?
No, he wants to go home.
No, he's got wisdom for us.
Shut it off. You all done, I, you're reading the book, you know, what was it, about a 600-page book and you're almost done?
There are several select board actions to take place. For Edith and Karen last night, the first was the select board voted to consider laying the ways, which referred this request to the planning board, which you haven't gotten yet, which is why you can't take action, I don't think. And also to DPW and other departments as necessary. Departments fill out their reports, send those to the select board, who hold a public hearing, and then decide whether or not to lay the way.
That's correct.
Once they, if they decide to lay the way, that causes a warrant article for the next town meeting to be created. Now, I don't know whether a planning board has its own public hearing. I, I'm not gonna pretend to remember that. But I know that there is a hearing at the select board.
Right, the layout is one process, the acceptance is a separate process.
Yes.
According to what we have here, these are all things that happen one after the other, after the other. Is that the acceptance, the, the select board places the article on town meeting warrant regarding acceptance after items A through G on the layout have happened. If they happen to go concurrently, that's, that's a local custom. And you still have under F those two timelines that have to be met, the 10 days and the seven. They have to meet both of those. So they have to schedule their, have to be very careful in how they, they schedule it, the applicant. So that they don't violate either the 10 or the seven days. If they're doing things with enough time, then those aren't gonna be an issue. If they're trying to compress the timeline, then you get into the issue of the 10 days for the book and the seven days in advance of the town meeting. If they're trying to compress the timeline, doing things in parallel. But my reading of this is that these are things that are to be done in serial. This is as far as I understand it, from the layout to the acceptance aspects of this.
Just a question of when you're doing the warrant. There's so many days.
But what Peter says, they won't do anything with the warrant until they've had a...
Hearing.
Hearing. And then once the hearing's closed, then they'll place a warrant if they so choose based on the hearing.
Then they'll decide whether or not to lay the way.
Correct, and then put in...
Then if they decide to lay the way, they will create a town, a, a, a warrant article to accept...
Correct.
The ways.
And this is not to prevent the select board from having a placeholder warrant, assuming everything goes to plan.
Right.
Which could then be revoked if things don't, do not go to plan.
Yep.
So...
Which is certainly happening plenty of times.
Yeah. Yes. So A through G is basically us. Or I'm sorry.
Only C, really.
It's up to C. And then D through G is the rest of the select board handling it.
And the town clerk, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah, the town, so... Okay. I just think, I just think we need to get the three months. And now I'm leaning towards four now because everything has to be done.
And I get, it's probably, maybe, maybe it's covered in our subdivision regulations. But I'm just... Feeling that it should be something more in what we're requiring. For example, there is no mention of asbill plans.
It's in here.
Yeah, there is. I remember there is.
Yeah, and I know, and I know there is. But is there, you know, in terms of subdivision regulations, i- is there a timeline for getting asbill plans? As it relates to this?
Probably not.
No, but we can't, we can't, I didn't think we could take any action until we get the asbill plans.
Should that be as stated in the agenda?
Well, I, I don't know if we need to put it in, in the layouts. I mean, because it's part of the subdivision regs, not the road layouts.
So, you know, and again, it could just be, maybe, something to amend the subdivision.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, normally, maybe just...
But, you know. Before the planning board will, will entertain a request, you know, for a meeting regarding road acceptance.
Completed asbill plans as opposed to 95 airs that we have to deal with.
Yeah.
Yeah, something on that idea.
And you do have asbill in the planning board regulations under acceptance of roads. These is actually the details of what type of plan is necessary.
Yeah.
That's why I make reference.
But there's no when in there.
I think you're right. There's no exact when. It's, I think it's assumed that when at the end of the project, when they're getting ready to have the road accepted at the end of the process.
Because, you know, it, it almost seems to me that, maybe a problem, but that, that would be the start before they even come to us looking for a meeting. Or when they come to us looking for this meeting, they have in their hand the asbill plans.
I agree with you on that.
Which would take them into these regulations here, which talk about the specific requirements for asbill.
Right.
I mean, this is probably why we say applicant must...
Hold a meeting, because the meeting would go through the checklist.
Correct, and also, of course, with the, with the subdivision regulations. So we're gonna, I mean, we, if we had everything in here, we'd have a longer document. I mean, I can certainly cite this section of subdivision regs as a footnote, possibly.
Yeah, something like that.
I like that.
This is just the beginning.
Okay.
I'm gonna say we don't probably have to worry about it until December.
Having come, and having come this far, I'd like to maybe take the edits, get it back to the next meeting.
Oh, definitely.
Oh, absolutely.
Dave, and then, you know, that, are you going to the select board to make sure they're on board with what's going on, too?
Well, I can circulate it to DPW and the select board as a courtesy to see if they'd like to add anything to it.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
I think these are really, you know, these are...
The first A through C is us.
A and C is.
Yeah. But I just, you know, I don't know. I guess give them the courtesy of looking it over and see if there's any comments. That's just an opinion.
Another courtesy that they give us.
Are there any other comments that you folks have on this?
I guess it's a good job.
Thank you.
You're starting to get more and more like me.
Okay.
I've been here for a couple of years now, you know.
Last thing on our agenda, I'm sure everybody is all wide-eyed, bushy-tailed and ready to continue our review.
Look to a germ.
Second.
Scratch that last one.
Did I hear a motion?
I did.
And a second.
And you second. Uh, okay, is there anything else to come before the board, just before we do a jury? Anybody have anything?
We're gonna get a notice about when our town administrator's gonna come and we're gonna have a, a meeting.
Yeah, he sent us an honorable, uh...
Yeah.
Letter, the honorable.
That was from Maple Hill.
Oh, Maple Hill, okay. We've already fixed that.
But we certainly, uh, did you read this in?
Yeah. I, I like what, I mean... Again, I don't beseech him. I think he's doing a good job. It's just, to your point, there's other players in the party.
Okay, I think I heard a motion in the second.
That office is nice. Have you seen that office?
I've seen the red office, because I had to go over and use the coffee machine.
Do I hear an aye?
Aye.
Aye.